This conference will now be recorded.
I call the regular session of the lobby to order. Shannon, roll call please.
Mayor Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Pidiyo.
Here.
Mr. Gandy.
Here.
Mr. Bell.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Thank you, Father. Mr. Gandy.
By your head and prayer. So, my Father, Lord, we just thank you for this absolutely beautiful day. For God, we thank you for the many blessings on our community and our citizens and on our staff. For God, we take a moment to pray for Israel as they go through a difficult situation. For God, I just pray for our nation as a whole that we would be supported, that our leadership would make the correct decisions. For God, as a community, I pray that we would lift them up prayerfully to you. I pray that we would join our fellow Israelis as they work through this fight. For God, we live in a peaceful community. It has its issues and problems, but, Lord God, we are thankful for this community. But, Lord God, we lift up those in Israel that are going through this time. They've moved from their houses, their families, their daily routines have been disrupted. Just pray for those. For God, as we have this meeting tonight, I pray that it would be short first. Second, of all, I pray that we would do the right things for our citizens. I pray that we would lead in a way that would bring honor and glory to your name and be less taxing on our citizens. For God, we love you, we thank you, and we praise your name in Jesus Christ that we pray. Amen.
Amen. So, I have to pledge. I pledge what we can do.
............ One nation, one home. And we will be a just as well. .........
May we see?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the...
Any additions or corrections? Eric Nunn, Shannon, roll call, both please.
Mr. Pidiyo.
Yes.
Mr. Bell.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Gandy.
Do you have a suggestion? No, no, no. She didn't call you.
Mr. White.
I don't know if I get a vote or not.
I'm sorry.
Wait, it was already done, so.
Oh, okay. It really didn't matter. It really mattered. Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for considerations of minutes of September 25th, 2023.
We have a motion second on these afternoon minutes. Any corrections, any additions or missions? Eric Nunn, Shannon, roll call please.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Bell.
Yes.
Mr. Pidiyo.
Yes.
Okay, three commissioners, staff report. And Shannon, anything this evening?
Yes, we have started to advertise for our police chief position and we already received one at present. So, that will be advertised on the police as well. And also, I wanted to just kind of remind the public about the downtown showman. It's the Main Street, ladies and Main Street Food Drive. And we have the box out here at City Hall. And we need a local businesses that have boxes as well. And it goes from September 21st to October 20th. So, be sure you don't make...
That is, that's easy. Let's get them. Anything to see?
No, everything's great.
Everything's been awesome. Chief.
Just a few things on my end. So, you guys know we started the new process of remodeling the break room at the PD. And also, the other day, I have another officer turn in his resignation. Got a condition offer from the Sheriff Department. But, we are still working on three in the background. We're doing three backgrounds right now. I have been requested to have officers in the area of Hurst Street and senior citizens to traffic control Monday, Wednesday, and Friday between 11:30 and 1:30. So, officers will be out there during that time. And last but not least, I mean, code enforcement continue to do a good job. I mean, she comes in and reports to me every day, so she's doing a really good job out there.
Any questions? Commissioner Trio, this is...
Chief Jackson. I'm trying to clarify what I want to say. You know, it's been a revolving door that we've had the same issue with the police officers coming and going. But yet, we continue to go down the same path of doing what we always do, just hire and waiting for the turnaround, come back, turnaround. And I'm looking for something for us to think about, something outside of the office. You know, maybe we just need to do something different because it's a nationwide problem. It's a statewide problem, it's a local problem. So, it's not a loving problem. It's... I'm not talking about management or nothing like that. But I just think that maybe we need to do something different because we continue to lack officers. We continue to lose officers, and it's a revolving door. But yet, we haven't come up with a whole different type of solution to the problem. All we continue to do is just address the regular problem. And I'm just trying to... And I've been thinking, how can we change this? Because for all the time I've been here, it's always been the same problem. But yet, we've never addressed the problem. And I'm just saying, change is always hard because people get upset, citizens, you know, commissioners are hard to convince on change. But, you know, we need to think of something different because at the end of the day, we've got to protect our community. And if we don't have a solution, and our only solution, and our only excuse is what we lost to the Sheriff Department. Again, because they're paying more, we law... Which we know, we know that we cannot afford more than what we're already paying. So, what can we do different that what we haven't been doing the last 20 years?
You know, I brought this up before. I think maybe the guys who we send through the company, I think we need to get back and have them sign a contract if they're not being paid by the state. Get them to sign that three-year contract, and after the three years are up, we can offer them some kind of bonus or something. I mean, because the other thing, the new girl we just hired, she went over to the Sheriff Department, and she felt that place was amazing, you know, how nice it was. We have to do something to either beautify or something to make it look pleasant. I guess she didn't even apply for the Sheriff Department. I mean, they went over to see the place, but they took over the other day, and she just thought, man, wow. You know, they get all this stuff. We can't compete with that part. But, you know, I think if we can offer some kind of incentive for moving or something like that, I mean, I don't know how we can do that. You know, get somebody from out of state, maybe give them some kind of bonus for moving and have them sign a contract. Because we're gonna have to have some contracts in here. And I think the other thing I've been thinking of, we've been having sending people to specialized training. And, you know, within a year they leave, maybe we need to find a contract, get them to sign a contract for two years. Depending on how much the training is cost.
Yeah, I mean, firm with it or something. I'm just thinking that it's just that...
Excuse me, but I'm like, it's a revolving door. I mean, guys come in and get their three years in, you know, experience, and then they go, and we have nothing to give them.
Or even a junior officer program or something, you know, just like the fire department. We used to have volunteer fire department, and then move over into regular firefighter, you know, something. Or mountain patrol, you know, they used to have that. That was big, but it's no longer as big as it was back in the past, but...
I mean, as we move forward, I mean, we look at maybe trying to get some kind of exploring, scouting, older people involved, you know, to maybe recruit them when you get them of age.
I just don't want to fall on our plate at the end of the day saying that we weren't providing enough...
But most of the boys that are leaving are saying money.
Yeah, it's always gonna be money. And that's always, that's been in our department, your department, it's always been that. That's always been, but the city is just, like I mentioned before in our meetings, we live within our meets. And that's our, this is all we can afford. So, if this is all we can afford, this is all we can do, we gotta figure out some other solution to fix the problem because we already know money is not gonna be the fixer because we don't have the resources to do so. And so, that's why I say that maybe we just need to think of something different, even if it's a hard sell for this commissioner, the community, we need to do something because we have to provide 100%, you know, fire and, you know, I'm speaking the same with the chief too. You know, fire and police, that's our duty as commissioners as well as the staff to ensure our public safety is first to within the city. So, I just wanted to mention that.
Like I said, those are some of the suggestions that I have.
And whatever may be, I mean, just throw it out.
I'll bring, I'll bring, I'll start with other guys and see if they, you know, what they have and stories actually that we can do, you know, something we can come up with. We're gonna do this as a team, so I'll get with them, and we can go on some stuff, see what we can do.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm wondering, throughout the years, as far as the retention bonus, you know, that the longer they stay, you know, bonus, that's something that maybe not right now, but in the future, that's something that we look into, that we're able to have that for the people that are stayed or three, five, seven years.
There is a program through the state that on the five, 10, 15, 20-year milestones, they get a bonus from the state. We also have a different fund which is at our discretion as to when and how the bonus is. As you recall, last year, we received $112,500, and that took $36,000. And we're getting, not, we're getting more than that this year. I think this year it's like $203,000, three-something.
No, I understand, we're gonna lose people regardless, but if we have things to offer, maybe we can hang on to some of them for maybe a little bit longer.
And maintain a good culture.
Yes, sir.
Chief, where do most of your applicants come from?
The ones we have now is local.
All of them. There's possibilities that we could help since they are local.
I think we have one from North Carolina.
Oh, wow. Well, Commissioner White said she'd go to face the sheriff's office if that would help.
Easy, but not for some.
I missed interpreting all of that.
Any further questions? Thank you, Chief, appreciate that. And good luck with your recruitment. Partie.
All right. Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, so just have to be thanks tonight. Code three, which is people that work on the emergency sirens. They did take the control box from the emergency siren over by the high school to work on it because it was not working remotely. We had to set it off manually last Monday. Right now, there's no timetable as how long it will be out of service. But I spoke with city manager, and he told me, you know, in order to get stuff fixed, sometimes you get taken out of service, which I do agree with. And right now, you know, you wait, do we get it worked on and just repair what we have, or do we upgrade it? But in this case, you know, to upgrade the system each pole is about $30,000, and we're looking at a couple thousand dollars to fix what we've got. So, you know, I know the city doesn't have the money to upgrade, so right now, we're trying to do what we can to do what we have worked. I know the other night, a lot of people said they did not hear them. I don't know if that was because of the way the wind was. Because I had people all the way over off of Fairview who said they heard it. Then I have people who were just past Knight Street who didn't hear it. So, I think that was just the way the wind was blowing and the way the storms and, you know, those sirens really, really, just that's how they... So, I can honestly say I did not hear it in Wisconsin. Yeah.
I listened, so my phone blew up, I didn't know. But I didn't know, one of my employees lives in the Station Two over there. He sounded, he said it sounded muffled and different things like that. So, he didn't know if there was some problem with it or something like that. So, he was just concerned, like I said, there was a lot of wind and different things that were going on, so.
And that's why I brought up beforehand at the commission meetings before about we need to add to the deal because our city's just outgrown the three that we have. I mean, there's no answer, but it's about it. We're just, when those were put in in the eighties, it was, I believe that's when they said they were putting in like '87.
They were there long before that.
Well, that's the...
As far as anybody who remember...
Well, so...
I was here, man.
So, that's what I'm saying, our city's grown a lot, and we just outgrown what we have. So, any other questions on that?
I do. So, would that be a good thing to maybe put on our ICP? Is that something we can get money for, or is it something that we can emergency fund or something like that throughout the state?
And the FEMA grants. So, I've asked Ms. Lopez there again about a grant, she's supposed to be trying to find a grant. And so far, she hasn't found any that I know of. Like, they're hard to find, I mean, transfer that stuff.
Yeah, I've looked, I mean, I'm on my search across the web.
I asked, what's her name, the gentleman, Shannon, Shannon Sessner, she's looking for me.
So, if anybody else has any suggestions, I'm all ears. So, that's code three, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
They're all... Do they also do like design? I mean, so they're supposed to be getting me quotes on adding a few sirens around. Right now, I'm still way better strategically placed. Yes, sir. So, I was thinking like three off the 17th area somewhere, maybe three on the east side of town, another one south, and then another one further. Since technically we have, well, all the way past the that one house, technically in their city limits, or we've annexed it into the city.
I'm afraid they're just gonna...
Well, I know, I'm just saying, but we do have a lot of residents further there to the south. And the furthest one we have south right now is the one off of, it's between J and K on the 7th Street, about a high school. So, that's the farthest one we have south. So, I would think another one further south, and then maybe another one on three B's and three W's.
Could we, or this is, I'm just thinking, I'll discuss this. Could we mount to our water?
Don't believe so.
I don't know. That's a structure we already own, and...
That's something I can ask someone about. So, I can't give an answer because I truthfully do not know.
You keep with FEMA?
We've, I've tried getting with FEMA, and right now, I've not, everybody's like, oh, we can call this person, 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 and it's one of those, I'm not the right person to call, and it's, you just get to run around. So, my second thing is there again with, same as the PD, is Troy Breen is gonna do the remodeling of the station one, the parts that were under remodel. He said they should get started somewhere by the end of November, and this is part of the capital outlet monies that we're using. Everybody knows that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and the fire department sold T-shirts last month to show our support to the patients and the families. And all proceeds that we get will go to the cancer center in Norley to help pay for, you know, wigs, women's undergarments, just for the cancer patients to help with that stuff. Fire department personnel will be wearing these shirts throughout the whole month. So, if you see us, then we're not just trying to slack on our uniform, we are showing our support. We have received a new ventilation saw which I could order to go with that and a tool that removes the windshield. It doesn't throw as much glass because right now, the way we take our windshields out, we have a little hand saw that you manually saw, and I mean, it throws glass everywhere. So, this new cutter, it's minimal glass flying, less people breathing it in, whether it be the patient or the firefighter, whoever. So, this goes with our extrication tools that we purchased last year, same batteries. They integrated from whether it goes on the extrication tools or the saw, whatever, they're all the same batteries. And they're, these were paid out of the state fire fund, very good money from this previous year, so I'm trying to use that as well. Our numbers for September are totally amassed. We had 201 interfacility transfers, we had 38 DOA cancel refusals. We had 69 airport transfers, we had eight table calls, we had 11, and fire calls, we had 25. So, that puts our quarterly numbers for the third quarter at total EMS at 678, interfacility transfers 128, DOA cancel refusals at 211, airport transfers were 30, table calls 30, and fire at 54. So, I have nothing else.
Can you hook that into the phone? The emergency thing, can you hook that into the phone?
That would have to be a text message that we would have to send, I don't know how that would work.
No, you tie the system into LCCA.
If they tied it, well, but that's part of the upgrade is tying it into LCCA. And they're actually the ones that called me for the tornadoes because we were talking about the last time we had the question of how do we know this and that? So, I ended up with LCCA. They called me, they said there's a tornado out by Najamar. It is heading straight towards Livingston, and there's 70-plus mile an hour wind and golf ball size hail. So, after about 10 minutes, they did cancel the tornado warning, but they still had the large hail and the 70-plus mile an hour winds. That is why we set the sirens off is because of that. I know Ms. Miranda put on the Facebook for people to see, you know, one reason that that is why we set it off in the parameters, and also gave the parameters to the Hoffs' new son so that they could put it out as well for the people that get the papers still to know what our parameters are as well. And I didn't know, I was gonna make a suggestion if maybe we need to send a copy of that out with the water bills or something so that everybody has it and can't say... Because we have people calling, hey, the sirens going off, what do we do? Get in, you see?
Well, that look, yeah.
So, and that's just, I mean, the stuff that I sent to Chief Miranda was, the last page is the, pretty much just sums up for the public what they need to do and what it is, what is...
Any other questions? And they heard it? No, sir. That's it?
That's all I have today.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you all.
Thank you all for coming tonight. I love you all. Shout out, welcome. Need vocal. Appreciate that. Our businesses appreciate that, so thank you very much in that area. One thing I did want to mention is here, last week, we had a pretty good-sized water break here over in front of the museum.
Love street, yes, sir.
And we had that taken care of, and I appreciate that. Good job.
Thanks.
One thing I do have to bring up though.
Hey, street.
That street, there's a really brought to my attention, and I know because I've been it too, so I can understand if we have some way to put some fill in there, at least get it ready before, you know, to keep some accidents happen, keep some rims getting bent before you guys get ready to...
Has to be one on the left, yes.
Oh, that's fine.
The...
No.
So, we need to pay.
I don't text and drive, so I can drive around. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Nice to meet you. Mr. White. Commissioner Gandy.
So, thanks to Leica Electric to put a lot of holdback...
And thanks to the water, I mean, if you're in straight department or assisting.
It's a...
They did.
Pretty nasty. So, the only other thing I have is, there's a horrendous smell in the library. It's been brought up to my attention again, I don't know, something...
Yes.
It's been a little eerie around for several years now or something, so.
I did take a tour of the library the day after we had to brainstorm and it smelled mildewy. We're supposed to have a master plumber's come out like today or tomorrow, so. And that's also on the capital outlet list for $250,000 upgrade. Plumbing issues, roof issues, and power issues.
The problem is... An ongoing issue. An ongoing complaint.
Yes, so.
Yes. I think that's kind of good.
Good evening. So, we are, this is week five. Week five. We are in the process of actually working on September, which is the month we should be working on in the county. So, that is amazing and great work by my team to get everything caught up. And here, who's been helping the city. And that, in that being, we're gonna be meeting with all the department heads and having budget meetings soon to look at the current budgets. And then also, we'll probably be doing some budget revision requests to the commission after we have those meetings, kind of get a reality check on what this budget is and what we really need in it, so. And one of the pieces of that I know is that we have the largest tax trial balance. I realized that it says they have a lot of money, but then it's not a lot budgeted in that particular line. Those lines, I think that's an $80,000 line, and I'm gonna be paying that up in quarterly stipends alone. So, we'll be also trying to leave with that. So... I think that's it for me.
Question, Commissioner Bell.
I appreciate you being proactive. So, getting us somewhere we need to be and looking forward to having some budget meetings and getting active, sort of, so, thank you very much.
There's been a lot of groundwork played for...
I gotta imagine, there's a lot more to do.
We're excited.
Any further questions? Thank you. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public, a bunch of housekeeping items today. I promise to keep it under five minutes. Last week, Mayor and I had a very productive meeting with the management from A.J.F. Sinclair in Omaha, and I'm happy to announce that we have received $520,000 towards their freshwater bill. The only outstanding balance due is approximately $60,000 for the months of September and August. Seconds, I'll pass around our very basic but new organizational chart. You may see some people shifting their roles at City Hall. After three months of study and consultation with all those involved, we agreed on the following staff changes last week. First, because payroll must go under finance, and Wendy Perez loves payroll for some reason, we are flipping Wendy Perez and Ophelia Gomez. Wendy will move to finance due payroll and accounts payable, and Ophelia will be the lead utilities clerk over Ida and Alyssa. Christie Gaspin wanted additional responsibilities in finance, so Christie will move to finance but continue her crucial roles with the ICIP Capital Outlet Grant Program as well as coordinating and attending commission, planning and zoning, lodgers tax, and parks and rec meetings. Kevin Mihadas will move to the Utilities Billing Department, where he will have three roles, Utilities Billing Analyst, Asset Management Coordinator, and continue his work in IT. Finally, Cassidy Carrasco will transition to the front desk to deal with the public, assist Shannon and myself, and help with the Utilities Department when needed while learning additional new duties. We are continuing to work on our SCADA system to monitor our water wells and booster tanks. As you may recall, this was the source of the city losing water about a month ago. Patrick De Cesaro of SCADA stated last week that before they can cut over to the new system, they need to be getting more reliable readings from the elevated tanks before they proceed with controlling booster pumps and that they are not getting reliable values back from the elevated storage tanks. He states it is possibly, it is possibly a communication issue involving the antennas on the towers. He states it is a possibly, it is possibly a communication issue involving the antennas on the towers. They had a programming crew in town last week. Per our request, the office of the state engineer has granted Livingston a variance on the type of meters used in our water wells until such time as they need to be changed out. Additionally, I have made sure that our water department has begun sending the O S E monthly production data on all our nineteen wells. This should reverse the negative letter issued involving the residential development project on North Seventeenth Street. Continuing with water, unfortunately, we continue to have issues with our census automated residential metering system and the way it communicates with the Tyler Utilities Billing Software. After twice bringing our census contractor in-house to fix the problems, we continue to have issues with data as it goes from one system to the other involving decimals and multipliers and other issues. Thus, we have had some bad readings in the last billing cycle resulting in incorrect high usage numbers, which we have been adjusting. To find a permanent solution for this problem, we have retained a new company named Resource Wise out of Albuquerque. They specialize in exactly these kinds of issues and have helped the cities of Jalal, Unis and Santa Rosa when they had similar utilities billing issues. We have already met with them and their team will be in-house, both in our office and in the field for at least three days, starting October twenty fourth. We will retain them until at least we have made the utilities rate provision in December to make sure our usage and billing figures are correct. They're in this part of the state at least twice per month, so we expect much better onsite technical assistance from this firm. Last week, I spoke with Laura, head of annual services. I brought up the issue that we simply have too many stray cats and dogs roaming our city streets. I understand that we have obligations to the county in terms of the stay and neuter program and that we assisted that with operations. However, we have a basic duty to the citizens of the city to proactively patrol our city streets for dead animals and strays. I asked Ms. Brock to please have her staff dedicate at least one or two hours every day to work on this issue. Next, last week I conducted a status review involving our Maddox funded grant writer as we have just hit her six month milestone. To date, Ms. Lopez has worked on three grants, the A D I, the ADA sidewalk grant for which the final hearings are on November fifteenth, the outdoor recreation grant for Chaffron Park, which we are awaiting a funding decision on, and an aging and long care grant for the senior citizen center, which was submitted in May. We are still awaiting a decision on that. I have asked her to look for other grants in the areas of FEMA grant for emergency sirens, water grants and housing project grants. I have asked the street department to work on Seventeenth Street from Avenue D to Jefferson. Although relatively new stretch of street, it has not been maintained and the culverts and drains need cleaning out because they need to flood it as well as buckled sidewalks that need fixing. That work starts, started last week. We began our splash pad permanent repair project, the Chaffron Park last week, starting with digging a trench to install a new three inch line. Master plumbers will begin work this week to completely retrofit the system, which will involve installing a lift station so that our system will be an on-demand once-through system similar to the seven splash pads and hubs rather than a recirculated system. And finally, as Ms. Cooper mentions, we are sitting down with each department head individually on October thirty first and November first to review the status of everyone's budget and to see how they're tracking. And I'll be happy to stand for any.
So during one of my walking around a nowhere fan, like in my alleyway, I know with like the little sensor for the water meters.
Sitting outside the home?
No, 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 the lid, no, it's somebody took it black too. If it wasn't me, I'm just going to say that. So as I looked at my backyard and I was walking around over by the courthouse in different areas. So I started noticing that we have several of those that the manway covers has the hole for the device that sends the, but they're not there. You know, so I don't know if somebody practices to make the, what is it, the N H O, National Hockey League or something, you know? Or just practicing chopping weeds. I don't know. But there's several drug companies that are missing. So that might help on some of our billing issues.
And that's part of the problem that we have five hundred items sale with dead news. And we get no data. And then that's one of the things we really, really need to address.
I noticed it.
I don't think Mr. Gandy is, and yourself, if we have five hundred, the system doesn't seem to be working. Maybe we don't, we don't need to go out and purchase five hundred.
Oh, no, it's just, it's a sense of nasal, it's just, you know, on top.
And there's a fair amount out there. It's not the ones that you've noticed, I think.
There's no excuse for that.
But I like to appreciate, tell you, I appreciate you reaching out to that company as far as with the billing. Because we don't need to be giving anybody unnecessary heart attacks. Finding out their water bill that's gone up, plenty bold, but also it'll help on our end too, making sure that we are billing correctly. So let it go hand in hand. So appreciate that.
I can't ask the commission to implement a new rate structure if we can't be confident in the usage figures we have.
I agree. I agree. As I said, that's why I'm happy that you reached out to them. So we can rectify this problem and move forward.
They told us, the good news is you're not the only city that's going through this. And I, I hope they, they do what they say because they know exactly what we're going through. And no offense to the other guys, but it's getting every three weeks for a couple hours and it's just rushing. Nothing gets. I'd like to mention, Mr. Miranda and Ms. Cooper, I know you guys are still trying to get everything fine tuned, but and you guys will be working on the budgets, but hopefully by the end of October, if not first of November, I'd like to see a budget report. And the only reason, always like, and I'll echo this, again, and I say echo a lot, but it's because we budgeted so high. And you know, if we get eight hundred thousand, this last grocery sheet tax, it was a little over eight hundred thousand. So I just want to make sure that everybody's on target because you never know what could happen. And our cash position in the bank continues to be very healthy. So I know that can change, but yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Miranda, following up on our meeting with A. J. Sinclair. I would like to state officially that the, while we talked about them being behind in their payments, we did recognize that there was a miscommunication in how they expected billing. And so they had officially received a paper copy of all of their the previous billing, which included the time that it was a month that we had suspended billing until we can get it under control. They had received that, our, our paper copy of that seal in early September. And we received payment before the end of September. And I told them that we understood that there was just a miscommunication and I just wanted to clear the air a little bit, that they were not delinquent. However, I also understand that there had been a lot of communication that was back and forth. They just could not pay off of anything but a paper signature. And anything that you want to add to that, I'd be happy.
Well, as you know, a footnote to that, we have set up an A C H transfer program within, so in the future, these kind of things, you know, it'll be more streamlined.
Instead of fourteen days, they promised it'd be twenty four hours. All right. Ms. Ball.
Yeah, so Avenue J is being redone currently. Have you been, you've been spending that area for the setup? They'll be putting in base course for the next day or two and then we'll see leaving soon after. As long as they keep passing all their density tests, which they're doing so far. We had a couple of spots we were worried about because of all the water retention there in that low area, but they got it worked and dried out good enough. So it passed all testing. Main Street's slowly getting their areas dried up and moving along. It's, that wasn't quite a chore. I did want to thank the wastewater department. They did come out with pumps to help in both of those areas, Avenue J and, and Main Street when we have that big one. Very much appreciate them for doing that. And as mentioned before, the street department with the Hold On Avenue H, I did call them back to help the leak count after, take care of that issue.
On that, I told Bernardo that they were the only group that I saw there working it. No, no offense.
No, no, I, I seen them guys were doing a good job. I seen them hauling off branches and everything, working diligently. So I appreciate the work that everybody did because it's just not one organization. It's a community.
Yeah. And that's what I say all the time. I have to work with different departments to get things out. I just want to thank all the other department heads for always pitching in and showing up with. On the cannabis regulations drive thru, I did some research. So Clovis, Rose, Roswell, Artigia and Hoffs all allow cannabis drive thru to sell it. Just so you guys are aware. Do I have any questions?
Mr. Ball, how are we, I know a while ago, we were talking about having a new gas station down. How are we coming along?
We're still working on final plan designs. We had to do a little bit more because there's floodway issue down there and stuff. So we're still working on things, but it is still. They seem to be moving a lot slower all of a sudden.
Okay, just wanted to find out early to see anything going on, but just curious.
Yep. It's still works to be done. And as you seen, the general dollar up on the north end of town, they're making headway.
Anything further? Anything on your end?
Mayor, Commissioner, nothing new, but getting any questions if you have, maybe you'll keep comments on a contract issue when it comes up. Other than that.
Seeing that, I believe you're off the hook for now. I have nothing further to say. Me, moves us to our public comment time. And we already have a participant. Don't forget, give your name. Okay. Three minutes.
So we're.
What's her name?
Dan Jimrow. I was just going to give you an invoice and a picture of the community tree that we're looking at purchasing. And what, and I wanted to explain why we're asking for so much time. And she's also giving you an invoice, although that regarding this tree. The Livingston Tender would like to start a first annual community tree lighting this year. This event will be coordinated with the county light up Livingston. The electric light parade and the tree light will all be on the same day. The county will light up the courthouse on Monday, November twenty seventh. We believe this will encourage the community to stay in Livingston for the holidays. We also think to be grateful to the community and surrounding areas to come and visit, to bring their families to stay overnight for the Loma hotels. The tree will be placed at the chamber because we are the visitor center, but this will also bring attraction to the downtown businesses. Due to the construction on Main Street, unfortunately, we will not be putting up decorations on the light poles this year. In the past, our Christmas decorations were misplaced due to not having proper storage. Moving forward, the chamber will be getting its own storage unit for the, all the decorations. We talked to Chief Miranda about that and we're looking into buying a storage container, one of those, and they're about, they're under six thousand dollars. But we're looking at, he's trying to find us a place for the, on the city property where we can store it. And that way we could store all of it or we can keep control of it so they don't get lost or broken in mid-year again. The chamber formed a Christmas committee that will also help maintain and help with this event every year. And we are, we have some outside people that have been, it's not just, it's chamber members, but it's people, you know, not just board members that are on there that are going to be doing that, being on that committee. Isabella also spoke to Bobby Kimbrough with Lee County Electric and they will gladly set the tree up because that was a big question. It is a twenty foot tall, twenty-two foot tall tree. And so that was a big question is how we would actually get that tree set up. And Lee County Electric has graciously said they would do whatever they needed to do to put the tree up and, and keep it up. The ambassadors will be serving free hot chocolate and put a sticker on every cup saying that it was, is funded by the Livingston Lodger's Tax. We're also going to have a banner by the tree that says, you know, funded by and purchased with Lee County, or Livingston Lodger's Tax. And the ads in the radio and newspaper flyers will be promoted to this event funded by the Livingston Lodger's Tax. The funds will be used for, to purchase a twenty-two foot tree, the tree copper ornaments and advertising of the event. The chamber hopes that this city, that the city will help bring this vision to life. And we know starting this tradition and know starting this tradition will bring joy and holiday spirit to life. In other words, we're willing to make this an annual event. This tree is not a one-time thing and it is, we know it's a lot of money. It's close to twenty thousand dollars for the tree and getting it shipped here. We understand it's a lot of money, but with the care that we're going to take and the precautions we're going to take storing it, this tree should last us many, many years. We don't want these ornaments, you know, we don't want to have the mystery and any future things that we buy for the Christmas because as soon, we're hoping that we're going to get with John and getting, you know, asking him, don't put that article back in the paper where we can start collecting Christmas funds again. So we will be able to decorate all of Main Street. And, you know, around, not just Main Street, but they can go down D and all of that. But we plan on keeping control of these decorations that we're purchasing. Like I said, we want to buy a forty foot container, you know, that we can use to keep all that stuff and make sure that it doesn't get lost, doesn't get abused and everything, you know? We want to sort correctly so we have it all there. Do you all have any questions about any of that that we can answer for you? Because this is going to come up on the lodger's tax. We understood, you know, and the lodger's tax board had to send it to wonder to make sure that there wasn't anything wrong with purchasing the tree. And there, the only question that came up was that it was, we were calling it a Christmas tree. And that being, it being a Christian holiday and we didn't, you know, he was worried about that. Other than that, that was the only question that he had, you know, that he saw with the lodger's tax funding and everything that to purchase the tree. And so with that, we decided to call it a community tree. Everybody knows what it is, you know? If it helps us get the funding so we can purchase the tree, we will call it a community tree. And with that, we were happy to do that.
Well, I, I don't know if, if all of that's accurate. I think there's some additional information. I think one of the things, you know, historically, we've looked at the purpose for the lodger's tax and the advertising. And one of the other issues that I brought up is if, if there was a study out there that showed, just like there's studies that say, hey, if you advertise for the electric light parade, you're going to have a more successful electric light parade. If there was something out there that said a twenty thousand dollar tree is going to have this much of an impact on, you know, the downtown area's sales, et cetera, that would be something else that would be supported. I'm not necessarily looking at whether it's a twenty thousand dollar tree or a two dollar tree. That's something for the commission to get. But it helps me from the standpoint of we're deviating from what we've done in the past as far as advertising issues. So I'm not saying it's, it's a bad idea. I'm just saying with additional information, I think there could be something puts that in a little bit stronger position as far as doable and it all depends on what, you know, commission looks at. Also, looking at the agenda for this evening, my understanding is that the tent, the sign and the tree were tabled. Is that right? So we did need an answer this evening, but I at least wanted to bring that to your attention. So we did need an answer this evening, but I at least wanted to bring that to your attention. Those are some of the issues I would look at, you know, it's a little bit different.
Can I involve with spending on doing, you know?
Yeah, I mean, like personally, am I opposed to it? No, but you're not asking me for my personal opinion, you're asking me. So that's, that's kind of where I come from. One is the cost. I don't know if that's a reasonable amount for trees. I have no idea, that's up to you. But I think we need to take a look at if deviates from what we've done in the past. But if we had a study or studies that said, hey, this tree is not on light, it's, it's a different form, but it's not on light advertising in that the tree is going to attract people to the downtown area. They're going to spend money, they're going to do this, they're going to do that. And so it'd be some of the requirements that we normally expect out of light.
And we're going to go up by November, I mean, twenty-second?
Yes.
So it will be, and it will be an attraction for the whole time. It will start my shop all holiday. Did you check into tourism?
No.
Okay, I told Isabella that Representative Penner had told me they pumped tons of money into tourism this year and there might be funding for you there too.
Well, we did look and one of the things we did look at is that there is the money there in Lodger's Tax. The money is there and it doesn't break the Lodger's Tax and it, it, you know, that money has to be spent at a certain time anyway. And so it would be a good thing for y'all to do that. But what we're trying to do is last year, the girls went to the electric light parade, they had their Christmas extravaganza at the Methodist Church. So at the end of the parade, we had food trucks, we had all of that kind of stuff. And this would all go together and make it a big event for the whole city. You know, for the courthouse, for the, where the Chamber building is, you know, where the light parade is going to be going. And again, we're going to have to, because of construction, you know, maybe we may have to reroute some of that. But again, it will, and it may go right by that Chamber building. And we can put it different places every year if that's some, some kind of attraction, you know, we can move it and do those kind of things with it. We're just, we're excited about what we can do to bring this to the city for the businesses and the local restaurants and stores and shopping. And maybe get people, you know, interested to stay in downtown, give them a reason, you know, a big blowout to start downtown. And it's to start the holiday season, you know, right after Thanksgiving. And that's the Monday after Thanksgiving. So do y'all have any more questions?
I do. It is, hang on, I'm going first. Oh, it is my understanding that county is also going to purchase the tree for courthouse. Do we know that for sure? Because I.
Yes, because we're working with Sandra and Christina from the courthouse. And so we even talked about maybe putting this one there.
That, I mentioned that too, I showed my pappers with them and stick it on their lawn and it's right in the middle.
You know, we, we talked to them about that. They, we, we definitely want to coordinate with the county as far as the way the courthouse looks. We don't want it to look one way and us look a totally different way. We want to coordinate all of our staff and events going on with them and so.
I didn't want to get into a competition that they're trees bigger than ours.
No, no, no.
You have that problem with the sheriff more.
And then, you know, my, you somewhat touched on it. My question you prior to the mission was, where are we going to put?
Well, we, we want to, this year, we're strongly wanting to go to that Chamber office there at the municipal court, you know, where the Chamber office is. And that way it's just a block of a main street. Again, we're, all of the construction and stuff, you know, I think a lot of traffic is going to be rerouted there. If we need to put it at the courthouse, we can, you know, it's not going to be set in stone anywhere, but we would like to put it on city property. You know, if the city pays for it, we would like to have it on. No, we're not putting it in the park. No, we would, if the city helps us pay for it and pays for it, we would put it in on city property. Yet we go to the county and the county pays for it, obviously, we're going to have to put it, you know, we're, we're going to have their input on where it goes.
Okay, I'm going to make one statement before I go to Ms. Price. Ms. Cooper is going to address the Lodger's Tax Fund later. And so I just wanted to make sure that we, that everybody understood that she will talk about what's available, what's not available before this night's over. Okay, Ms. Price, you have something to say?
I'm on the Lodger's Tax Board.
I knew that.
We were, didn't want to do this because it's a gray area of what we can give them money. And that gray area has not been fully functioning. We're allowed to give them money for advertising, not buying a item. And that's where we were, why we didn't give for a table or Main Street. Because that area says we're not allowed to give for an item, like the tree, it's an item. For advertising, yes, but for an item to be purchased in, can signify a deal. The Lodger's Tax is real gray on our ordinance.
It's gray, but it can be done. It has in the past. It's definitely in the past, I mean, Mr. Holt, your, your wife, you, you know.
Oh, trust me. Trust me, a lot of the stuff that she brought was because stuff that I read and stuff that I seen. So I agree with Betty, there's a lot of gray area.
There's a very.
You need a good description on what we're able to do and not do.
Yes. That's why we only chose to have many for advertising.
Right, and I said we can go by other ordinance, there's other cities, other Lodger's Tax. I have hobs in my hand right here. Angible property, real property, not eligible.
Yeah.
Moral of that is just, you know.
And that's what I said, I just have hobs. So there's, we have nothing, we have nothing, hard, no hard copy. We need to have that, so it's something that we can go off of. Not trying to discriminate against anybody. But the thing is also, if we say, okay, we'll grant it to you, next organization comes in and says, we want a tree, we can't give it to you. Well, that's discriminating.
Well, the city already has a tree at that.
So we don't want to get ourselves in a position where we're following not the right protocol, setting ourselves up for audits. So there's a lot of stuff that has to be looked into before this is a decision. That's just my opinion.
Okay. That's all I have. So there are different ordinance and like that on everything. This one says proceeds from the occupancy tax that are collected based on the thirty-first and subsequent days of rent lodging. Well, anyway, go on to maintenance of city facilities, operating cost of city facilities, construction of city facilities, maintenance and construction of roadways and pedestrian improvements, providing police and fire protection for the municipality, provide funding for community economic development, providing funding of arts, culture, and historical facilities and operations.
I would say the last two would be where I would look at possibly sliding it in.
Yes.
As Patrick stated, as far as economic.
And that was our ordinance and it's signed by him as the mayor, Mr. Trejo.
Then I said, I agree with what Patrick said, you know, but I believe, you know, we should look at it, some tourism FDA, make sure that everything is correct.
Right. So, yeah, so it's a little bit different than just an item like a computer. You know, at the top of the tent, some advertising on it, that gets us closer. But we see, see what the details are and then kind of drill in and see. And you're absolutely right that if you decide to do this and there's someone else that comes in with a different view than the majority of people in this room on that particular holiday, you have to be prepared for that also. So we can't, you know, let you step out there.
This, after your recommendation on that, that's one reason why we said community tree. You know, instead of a Christmas tree, they call, we're going to call it a community event. Light up Loveington, you know, that, we want to go with that with our electric light parade, we want to do all of that. We do want to call it a community tree and do it that way. So that's, that's kind of the controversy that we've been with. But the way it says, you know, you can, and again, we, we would provide that tree and put it anywhere the city would want it to be placed. We could move it every year, we could put it in different places.
Anything further, Commissioner?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, I think she went over three minutes.
I was going to say.
Say one because I, I want three minutes, like if they was coming up with a favor.
I'd like to say one thing. As long as you get us up to speed on that Lodger's Tax, where we actually stand, I think that's very important before we make that decision.
Well, there's where we stand and it's where we budget it.
Yeah. Make adjustments to the budget.
The other thing too is that if we need to know pretty quick because we're going to have to work this tree to get it here in time. And so that is, and to get all the advertising and the posters, bringing that stuff. I mean, we're, you know, getting well into a code where we need to have it and to get, to get it shipped. What was the date they said?
I ordered it last Friday, it was November thirteenth.
So we're looking at, at time runs on it also. Thank you for your attention on it. Thank you.
I was thinking to say, it's about, you have your three minutes for sure.
Hi, this is what Director of the Chamber. This is Polo, she's ambassador, president, actually executive assistant. We just want to come up here and give a quick update of what we've been doing with the Chamber, our upcoming events. Our kids did go back to school, so it's been a little crazy, so we haven't been able to update. Every year we do partner up with the county to do pumpkin people. It is free to participate. This year, you can stop by the Chamber, go by the Chamber, pick up your voucher for our desire, your pumpkins and your yard sign. We are giving away money this year. First place will get five hundred dollars, second place, three hundred, and third place, two hundred. We are also coordinating the safety of this year. Right now we have a hundred and ten businesses that have signed up to participate and will be giving out money for Halloween.
What is the date on that?
That's October thirty-first on Halloween.
We're going to do it on Halloween.
Yes, sir.
All right, there was been, I heard talk maybe Saturday or whatever, and just wanted to make sure we got that.
We also want to invite the community to come out to this month's coffee will cost that will be hosted at Battle Energy. That's on October nineteenth from seven-thirty in the morning to nine-thirty. We also want to let the community know that everyone is welcome. This is, this isn't, this is not just a Chamber event, this is, we invite the entire community to come out. We also, we want the community to build relationships with LPD and we're excited to know that next year we'll invite our first responders to be part of these events as well. And I'll get with these if, if you like it. We also have our networking breakfast on October twenty-sixth and that will be at the Algega. Out of the five minutes, what I have before the meeting, this is what I put together, but the Chamber has been really, really busy. Our mission, it's always our businesses. We've had plenty of room recollections, ceremonies, and just making sure our businesses stay here in Loveington. Like that is about it. If there's any questions, anyone has for the Chamber and possibly our tree.
I just wanted to make a report, but. All right, the Loveington Ambassador President, we just hosted a Halloween retreat meeting and just helping to announce I, we're creating three more ambassadors coming to my twenty-three members total and fourteen junior ambassadors. The junior ambassadors are here to help the community, so we are excited to start this new program as well. So you will be seeing more teams helping the community out, not just business leadership.
We're trying to teach our youth to get involved. Yeah, thank you so much. And if any time you have any questions, but please feel free to reach out to us. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I want a Christmas tree. Not a community tree, I want a Christmas. Oh, I thought it was. I'm, I'm sorry. Okay, so I've already prepped a lot of you about this, but just so that it's, it's a forewarning, I did not get it on the agenda this week, but I was intending on getting on the agenda next, next city council. Jackson Avenue would like to do a praise concert on October thirty-first in addition to our trunk retreat. And we're trying to enlist the businesses across the street. Also, we're inviting other churches to join us and we would like to close down Jackson Avenue between the Eighth Street and Ninth Street from time of five-thirty to eight o'clock PM. And so that we, because we are a safe spot and we always have a lot of people coming in there, we definitely have a problem with Ninth and Jackson because that's a main thoroughfare. And with doing this additional things with more people involved, we would like to look at the safety aspect of having the street shut down for that period of time. I was also trying to enlist the police and fire department to show up and turn on their lights, maybe get a fire truck to come out there and put out its ladder. And in a good sense, so we don't have a fire, it just be for advertising, hint, hint. And, but we would like to do that and I'd just like to forewarn you that that's what's going to be on the agenda next week, but to allow you a chance to contemplate it between now and the next city council. So if you would, I'm going to pass around a picture so you know, you got visual about it, so you know what we're going to check. Before all businesses have been okay with.
That works. Anyone else? Oh, Mada was supposed to be here tonight and I was going to ask her to remind everyone that on October the nineteenth, there will be an economic growth meeting. Mr. Matt, what did they officially?
Called a retreat.
Retreat. And I know the commissioners were, are, are invited. It's going to start at about eight, they finished by two, give or take. It will involve not only eleven committees, but EDC and the Chamber, I believe. If the commissioners feel that they're going to go and we create a forum, then I would suggest that we need to call a special meeting for that and double size it for just that we're all going to be there. So you might let, we need to let Shannon know that would be a week from Thursday. So we would need to have that scheduled in the appropriate time. Since she's not here, I'm just gave a little spin. So seeing no one else come forward, this moves us on to, we get to skip. We get to go straight to action. This is resolution twenty-two-three dash one oh five, point city manager as trustee, Americas trustee. Hey, most in section for. All right. Who is presenting?
I can do this.
Okay.
Pension plan, the one that we implemented before, we put on a pair, we still have some employees that participate in that. And the city manager has always served as, as a trustee and the administrator.
Any questions? Hearing that, Shannon, roll call vote please.
I mean, Mr. Bolt? Mr. Danny?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Trejo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, question for resolution twenty-two-three dash one oh six, approval of city manager contract.
Okay, I'm watching a tick on this. Who's going to take lead on it? Shannon, I know you made copies, but.
Yeah, I, I made copies and included highlights, six-month evaluation. And then if that's back three, increase it five thousand dollars in pay. And also the sixty-day requirement, if he were to leave, that he would let us know in sixty days. And if y'all were to release him, then we would give him sixty dollars.
Sixty dollars.
Not sixty days, I believe it's sixty days.
Yeah, so I think the, the request that you made were to change the term from two to one years. I think that changes in there, there's a renewal option. You asked about changing, I think we asked previously, like a ninety-day severance and a thirty-day notice. So we changed those both to sixty. There was the change in salary and then also the option.
There was the change in salary, and then also the option after the 180-day review to go back on 5,000. And so I think all those changes are in there. Happy to discuss some or other considerations if you have. My understanding is, I think David's take a look at it, satisfactory to him, but I would let him speak if it's not, so.
Notice. Resort. It's your last chance to get out of this.
I'm not going to say that. Go ahead, Mr. D.
I didn't want you to be aware of it, just as long as you are, keep us informed as a board, I think you, you got a good career. I think one, not saying that you will, but I think the previous one, they deviate and start doing their own thing or get influenced by somebody else doing, or going in a different direction. It, you lose the confidence of the board, and once you lose the confidence of the board, it's just, and.
You get 60.
You get 60. Just remember, just keep the entire board, and then remember, it's the board that gives you directions. It's not, not two commissioners, not, you know, it's the majority of the board that moves, moves you in that direction. I just, the only reason why I say that, because I don't want you in the end and say, well, Commissioner so-and-so was in my ear the whole entire time. And go, and say, Patrick, the only reason I couldn't perform my duties is because I had a commissioner in my ear the entire time, and I couldn't perform my duties in, in six months into it, and that's your excuse. So just be a problem with it, said you have one commissioner or something that, that we have to go in the close session that continues to be in your ear or something. Not that I've seen it, but I'm just saying that I just don't want that to be the outcome. It's your decision, I just want to say, when I, when I address you, I'm addressing you because you made the decision, not because you're influenced by somebody else to make that decision.
Yes, sir.
And that, and so you're held 100% responsible for it. So if it goes bad, it's your decision, so just always keep that in mind. So, Mr. Miranda.
Mr. Miranda, you've read your agreement here.
I have. Yes, sir.
And you're good with that?
Yes, sir.
You've used the word a couple of times, culture. You know, we have to develop a culture, and you have a big culture to change here. I wish you the best of luck, and I hope that maybe your influence on our staff and citizens as culture is something I can use in my own business.
I appreciate that, thank you. You did a hell of a good job last night. You addressed everything that needs to be addressed, you know, hesitate, and there's some stuff that, that you've got done in less than 30 days that I've asked previous managers to get done, and everything.
So it's about something you started cracking with?
Yeah. No, I appreciate it very much, and I'll continue transparency and accountability, and I'm happy to report that in four months, I cannot be micromanaged and no expense chirping in my ears, so thank you all for your.
I was waiting for the contract.
And on that note, you have, I'm guessing approximately 10 or 15 minutes before I sign this, and then you're only out $60, so I mean.
You can negotiate for 20 from each of us.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Shannon, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dean?
Yes.
We're not there yet. We got nothing.
I was waiting on you.
Well, apparently, I can't read either. Oh, here we go. Mr. Miranda, like to make a motion for 20, make a motion for resolution 2023 dash 107, lodger tax. I'm really trying to decide on that. Um, lodger tax request, second quarter, this year, 24. Hey, there, wants you to text. All right, who's going to give exactly the floor?
As I was saying, we just went title several items. We gave just two of them, nine or every last one. We gave about 5,000.
5,100.
5,100 to Chamber and 6,000 to Jacob.
Waltham. Jacob Waltham.
Waltham's. County.
Or the credit fair.
Yeah, or the credit thing. But the other items, that's every question we tackled because of the questionable circumstance of what they gave, we didn't get. And nobody else asked for anything.
And as I might just add, it's somewhat related to this action item. Ms. Cooper is getting a better handle on what the actual balance is going to be.
Yeah.
So we can feel confident about giving a recommendation in the future about additional asks. So I think by the next meeting, we'll, we'll have, we need to know the balance and what they're able to spend. As everyone remembers, lodger tax is kicking in more this year to Main Street and Chamber and the museum. 80,000. Yes, is what, is what it pays for.
I, I asked if you required this included in our packet. There is an account. I gave you, you want to go over that?
Yes.
Tell the. Where we're at or.
So the, this request of 11,100 fits within the advertising budget that's available. There's 25,000 and 2,500 dispensed, so that's well within the budget. As a total, with this 11,100, 59,000 resents. Your 75,000 budget will be sent out, so it means we will need budget adjustments before even next quarter stipends could be paid. And as I said, as I mentioned, there's, the money is in the fund, it just wasn't budgeted up to the amount that was in the fund. So it's just one of those meetings we need to have, and you get requests for, because obviously, there wasn't anything like a $20,000 Christmas tree even included in the original budget. So those are the ones that, and budget adjustments don't happen overnight either, so that's also another.
We try to stay real loud when we get this.
Yeah, so, um, at least the, the 50% increase in stipends was also not included in the budget. So that's something that needs to be added into.
Definitely do that in the future. And I prefer it, right more like. There's, let's see, a big ticket item like 25,000. Yeah, because I think it affects, you know, it affects the.
There's the Main Street. Together, they have 35,000 stops.
But we say, just as long as everybody understands, because if it goes down south, I want nobody saying, well, where's our 50,000 dollars you promised us?
So do I need to restate my motion by making an amendment for the Chamber 100 for the Black Flag and the Black Flag's large crest fair? I don't know if I need to restate my objection.
So this, this resolution is included in the budget.
The other stuff now, we didn't.
Any other questions?
At this point, I don't think so. Any questions? No, but we look at more clarity once figures are up that we move forward.
Adjustments.
Appreciate you.
Shannon, roll call vote.
Mayor Roberts? Mayor Roberts?
Yes, I'm sorry, no, I was debating, I'm sorry, yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Dean?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner White?
You'd like to make motion to pay bills?
Motion to second to pay the bill. Give a few minutes to look those over.
I just have one question at the third one down on the first page. Have you ever seen an air conditioning, air conditioning unit?
That's for the senior citizens, I think, no. That's a city-owned building. We have municipal quarter.
Was it a total replace or what, 13,000?
Yeah, it's for a seven and a half ton unit, two, seven and a half ton units. I think there's a total of five up there, and they were, I don't know how many years old, so.
So it was first a total replace on the two units?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the other quote we got was a 21 or 22,000, so these guys were like almost 50% lower.
I just wanted to know what we did, because I was hoping that it was a replace and that we did some work.
Absolutely.
For 13,000.
And you'll see a couple of items, like the vacuum truck for ways of.
I see that one also.
That's out of that, and the microscope for Jerry, we're out of the COVID fund. And as of today, our COVID fund is now down to 214,000 dollars. So it's spent about 1.2 million in the past four months or so. Still have a little bit left. It's one of the good news.
Good news, thank you.
On prevented maintenance, can you have someone check out the toy here? So just turn on the heater, see, make sure. I think if they said item for a while, we need, they need lockup, they need something. I think to go in there and do a full replacement there as well. I don't think we pulled any maintenance on that building since we closed the doors.
Yes, sir. Anybody else have any items that you'd like to put, ask to go? Okay. What's that?
What are we doing in the back room?
Ah, the clutch.
What?
Very expensive clutch.
Yeah.
Laying off, but I put on.
It's not, it wasn't a clutch to drive it, I'm told, it's a clutch for the.
PTO? Is it an automatic?
That's right, it's our huge.
Yeah, I know what it is, but it just seemed.
Let's more information.
Yes, sir.
I'll talk to Robert. Because I know they worked on that for about a month or two. It was a clutch for the vacuum itself, it wasn't a clutch.
So it's the clutch off the PTO, on for the clutch for the, the vacuum pump itself.
Go to hydro vac, some of these hydro vac companies, see how, how they, or they're getting their services as well. I'm just curious, it seemed a little. It seemed high and major, Robert.
Good question.
Oh, no, good. Yeah, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. And with that, the items on the agenda are exhausted, we are adjourned. All right, last chance.